That's the goal.
No, there was a flash that wasn't there. I don't think so. I mean, it may have, but it was. Oh, well. You see something start to explode, let me know.
Good morning and welcome to the October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five City Council meeting. We're gonna begin with the invocation, followed by the pledge, if you'll please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, I just thank you for today. I thank you for the change in the season and the cooler days and nights. Just thank you for our city. Thank you for our first responders. Thank you for our staff. Just thank you for the attitude of serving others. Just thank you for today. Thank you for our city. Your son's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll begin with the minutes from September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. Leave to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? Call us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. R-one, Darren.
All right, good morning, Council.
Morning.
Mayor and Jenny, City Engineer, here to talk about the Tech Todd Advance Funding Agreement, resolution of support for the Bolt Avenue Bridge Replacement. So basically what we have is Tech Todd does annual inspections of a on-system and off-system bridges within the city. And they found a, the, the culvert here had spalling of the concrete, an exposing rebar, and just in pretty, pretty rough shape. So what they did is they actually applied for a grant on our behalf and got it. For here, the grant, the federal grant, has eighty percent federal funding, ten percent Tech Todd, and ten percent local. Our local match is about forty-seven hundred dollars. And what they allow us to do also, instead of putting up that cash, they allow us to do another project with structural repairs within our city. So we opted to do that. We were wanting, planning on doing one anyway. So that's what you find in your packet about the West Mug Creek project. So that's what we are doing instead of that. So what this resolution is, is just a resolution of support for this project and allowing, supporting us doing another project in lieu of our local match.
Any questions for Darren?
Move to approve R-one.
Second. Got a motion by Curtis, second by Hawkins. Any further discussion? Call us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Darren. O-one, Florine.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to present O-one. The Public Funds Investment Act, Chapter two-two-five-six of the Texas Government Code requires each city to adopt a written investment policy that must be reviewed annually by council. Finance or investment advisors and legal have all performed the annual review with no proposed changes. So our recommendation is, is that we request the City Council considering, consider conducting the annual investment policy review and adoption of the ordinance amending the Tyler City Chapter Two by adopting our investment policy.
Any questions or comments for Florine?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Nichols, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? Call us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Florine. M-one, Darren.
He's back.
What I want to do here is present the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six Half-San Seals Tax Annual Work Plan. What we have is a, is our standard. Every year we do this. We have our schedule right here. Just some highlights from here. We have the, the call for projects every April, so people can submit projects they would like to be considered and scored and ranked with all the other projects around town. We have the, the board approval happen this year back in September. And we have the sixty-day public comment period after that. That actually expired on November eighth, the sixty-day public comment period. And this year, we had thirty-nine projects submitted in the call for projects. Only fifteen were actually eligible for funding because of duplicates and other things like that. We have the, we'd established a tier system a few years, a couple of years ago. Right now, tier one are those under contract and those that'll be funded here in the next couple of years. And tier two are the next three years, and tier three and four are beyond that. We also prepared a ten-year forecast with all the projects through tier three, which includes everything. So I just want to give you a couple of highlights. Here's the ten-year forecast. And I know it's kind of hard to see up here, but you'll also notice that really a critical year for us, where we drop down below us is about one point eight million in the, in the fund balance, is twenty-twenty-eight, or twenty-twenty-seven, I'm sorry. So, but we still, that's, that's, that's enough to cover anything, and continue the fund starts continuing to increase after that. Want to go through the annual work plan, just some highlights in here. These are the tier-one projects, which basically are those current projects and those be funded this year. You can tell we had a lot of drainage projects in the previous as, as a, with a lot of rain we had. We decided to have an emphasis on that. But notice that we do continue all the existing projects, and we do have all these still, all the annual allocations of the pedestrian improvements, the street maintenance, and things like that. Still, for the tier-one projects, you'll notice we have the IT building under construction, the Miracle League that was finished, so we have the police training facility. We also are on tap to do, start the Fire Station Number Two relocation this year. On streets and, and traffic, we have the downtown improvements in here. We have the Sellers Landing, well, as of last month, Bass Pro Way Centennial Extension, and the Brick Removal Project in here. What you'll, also notice here, on the tier-two projects, we have the Fire Station Number Six. We have the Fire Training Facility, which is, you know, three years after that. We have Shiller Road improvements, Phase One. This is a recommendation from the Shiller Road PER, preliminary engineering report. This is one of the recommended projects for that. We also have the South Broadway and Grande intersection was a recommended project from the South Toddler Mobility Study, along with our annual projects. Again, we did do the tier-one and tier-two projects and tier-three of the ten-year forecast. I just wanted to hit some highlights here for y'all. So, do y'all have any questions or?
No, but that was quick.
I'll try. It was great, huh?
We can go back over any of them if the Council may have questions on.
Yes.
Anybody have any questions?
Darren, any of the projects that are out at the airport, are we getting funding on that through FAA?
All the projects at, at the airport, we do get the ninety percent grant.
Okay, so those are all ninety-ten, good.
Any other questions?
Do you have any that dropped off totally? Drop, drop off the list?
Not really. I mean, we had some, some far-off projects, but they were funded other places, things like that. But I would like to request City Council consider receiving this presentation, which you just did, of the annual work plan, and consider adopting it as the city's work plan.
All right.
Move to approve M-one.
Second.
Well, read a second. Okay, got a motion by Curtis, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? Call us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Darren. M-two.
Mayor and Council.
Morning.
Morning.
I am presenting this item today for the Construction Management Manager at Risk process that we're doing downtown. And we really looked at, we have a tight budget. We've got about five point nine million or so left out of the thirty-one million budgeted for downtown. So for Phase Two, the green space, we looked at how can we be most efficient with the budget, and then talking that through with our team. It was the Construction Manager at Risk. So we went through the formal process, the legal process. We posted in the newspaper all the things that we were supposed to do, did the qualifications, and we had six applicants for that proposal. The firms included several local firms, Tegerty out of Tyler, SCI out of Tyler, Hoar Construction also, who's working in Tyler, and then, of course, Fane, who's currently working on the project. After we went through the scoring and qualification process, as well as looking at the amount of money they were requesting for this, we awarded our, at least our, scoring to Hoar Construction. Also, one of the main things with Hoar Construction is that they will be working on the east side of the green space. So the timing is really critical, and we think that they can take this as far as the west side and the east side together and really do an efficient job to finish the project for us. So we took this item to Haf San yesterday, and they recommend approval of it, of this contract with Hoar Construction. So we're requesting the City Council consider authorizing the city manager to execute the CMAR contract with Hoar Construction in the amount of three forty-nine, four ninety-one. And just to clarify, they'll walk through the preliminary process of design with us so that we can make sure that, you know, through their expertise, we are again sticking to the very tight budget that we have for the green space. And Stephen, Florine is here from Hoar Construction, if you have any questions.
Any questions for Stephanie or Stephen? I, I will say this. Hoar Construction and, and what they've done on the courthouse has proven and shown to the, to the entire community that they've got what it takes to make something happen. So I'm excited that, that, Stephen, I'm glad you guys have gotten this, and I'm glad that you're gonna be doing the east side of the square as well as the west. So there'll be consistency in, in, in the product that's, that's presented. So I'm excited about this. So, anyway.
Move to approve. Second. All right. Got a motion, motion by Hanny, second by Nichols. Any further discussion? Call us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M-three, Michael.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. The next item we have is a route study proposal. This is to award a contract for the route study for East Grande Boulevard, Old Omen Road, and Toll Forty-Nine. So if you're familiar with the area, we are just focusing on the, the section where it's just east of Highway one-ten, which if you're looking at this map, true highway, Highway one-ten is located right here. This is east Grande, and you see Shallow Road towards the top of the map. So there are multiple plans right now that this study is here to support. So the first one is being the extension of East Grande Boulevard, which is gonna go east from, from the current limits at Highway one-ten. There's also a proposal to extend Old Omen Road south in the very same area. While all of this is happening, so this is what is all in the, the City of Tyler's Master Street Plan, the net RMA is looking at Toll Forty-Nine Segment Six right now, which has three options that they have color-coded. The first one being the purple route, which looks approximately kind of like this. And they also have what they call the yellow route, which essentially parallels the purple route. And then they have a third one, which is called the teal route, which goes approximately in this direction. So there is a lot of overlap that we are seeing in the area. Further complicating is that there is the rail line that goes along just to the east side of Highway one-ten. And what makes things even more interesting as we've been looking at it is, right next to Grande Boulevard, there is a overhead utility line that, in case there's any cases where, for instance, if these two streets are to cross, since Toll Forty-Nine is an access road, and it'd have to be an overpass in order for these two to cross. So having the utility line there really makes things a whole lot more difficult. And the last thing is just looking at all of the drainage that's in the areas. There's a lot of floodplains in the air. So there is a lot of constraints happening, and there is a lot of interest in trying to make all of these thoroughfares work. And that is the, the purpose of this study, is looking at these separate plans. The NPO decided to come in and try to say, let's look at this whole area holistically and try to find a route study and a proposal for all of these scenarios that will work best. So the, really the goal is to address both the, the local and the regional transportation needs. So local really being the city streets, trying to have that connection from Grande that could go around to Old Omen, which should have a, a connection from South Tyler up to the UT Tyler area, and then, of course, the regional traffic going around the east side of Toll Forty-Nine. One of the things do want to note is that this final report, it will be a recommendation of optimal routes that, that will be working with the city and the RMA throughout this entire process to, to find a recommendation. But it does not lock neither the city nor the RMA into a specific route. So we're gonna be looking at recommendations that will work for, for instance, for the, the purple and the yellow routes, and also looking at the teal routes if they are selected. So there's no preference that's being given with this study, just recommendations for each scenario. The NPO put out a request for qualifications called RFQ. That went out in September. There were six submittals that came in, and the grading committee that reviewed the proposals found that it was HDR was the most qualified firm to perform the work. This study will be a hundred percent funded through the NPO's Transportation Planning Grant. However, the City of Tyler is the fiscal agent for the NPO, which means that we follow the financial policies, which means any contract exceeding a hundred thousand is brought to City Council for approval. So the City of Tyler will be paying the upfront cost, and then will be reimbursed through the transportation grant a hundred percent. And with that, it is recommended that the City Council authorize the city manager to enter an agreement with HDR Engineering to develop an East Grande Boulevard, Old Omen Road, and Toll Forty-Nine Route Study for the Tyler Area Metropolitan Planning Organization in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars.
Michael, can you go into a little more detail on the Toll Forty-Nine, since that's a net RMA project? What is NPO or our function regarding Toll Forty-Nine when that's a net RMA?
No, that's a great question. And that's one of the things with Net RMA, who is active in this project already and has already been supporting it. They are still in the process of doing what's called the environmental analysis of all three of their routes. So they have not really determined which route that they want to select, or even if the routes that they have selected right now are gonna be the finalized ones. And in talking with the Net RMA, they have said that essentially now would be the best time for them as they are continuing to develop these routes, and they're going through the public engagement process for their study, that this is the best time for them to look at and make sure that everything is coordinating with the City of Tyler proposal streets. So it really became the, we really do have the support, support from both the City of Tyler engineering staff and the Net RMA engineering staff of wanting to try to find this best outcome.
Any other questions for Michael?
No, but I, I, it's a great idea because it's, it's needed out there for sure, so.
Glad to see it.
Move to approve M-three.
Second. Got a motion by Curtis, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? Call us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Hey, Michael, who came up with the little train emoji thing you had on there?
I love it.
This is twenty-twenty-five.
Was it the B and O, the short line, the Pennsylvania? Which one was it?
M-four.
Good morning. I've got M-four. I'd like to request that City Council consider authorizing the city manager to award carousel technology, carp through Omni Partners contract R-two-four-zero-three-oh-three for the Samsara product as the telematics provider for City of Tyler. Just a little bit of history. We've been using Drive Cam for the past thirteen years, and it's been an excellent product. We've been able to do every year driver awards. Like James, he's a veteran, knows that have no risky behaviors. But Fleet, when it comes to telematics, they didn't have what they needed from Drive Cam. So we've been running Drive Cam and NextTrack. NextTrack gives them the ability to track mowers, tractors, trailers. They get telematics such as engine hours, miles, you, fuel usage, diagnostic codes, all that information that, that Fleet needs. But there was either a transition where NextTrack was bought out, and they started having billing issues and GPS tracking issues. So they started looking for another solution, and that's where Samsara popped up. Working with Fleet, we started a demo back in June of twenty-five, and we started looking at, could this be a solution for all, an all-in-one? Demoted with solid waste, transit code, and traffic, and everybody loved it. Part of it is we've got instant GPS tracking. We can see where our units are. Are they moving? Are they sitting idle? We can see the breadcrumb trail to see what kind of route the drivers ran throughout the day. Of course, the safety is still there, shows behaviors that need to be coached, who coached them, when they were coached. And we can still recognize those with no risky driving behaviors. Now for Fleet, the maintenance model, they love this because just by logging in, doesn't even have to have the vehicle. They see battery voltage, miles, hours, and diagnostic code. Do we ever check engine light that's active? Is it low severity? Like that first one, I don't know if you can see it, but pretty much is a very small fuel leak that's pretty much telling them the gas cap probably isn't on type. So they could see that just from logging in the system. Of course, the ability to track the miles per gallon, idle time. This is one that I love. We have the video footage that shows in cab, out cab. Good clear picture shows the, the speed limit and the speed of the truck, and also the ability to tap into additional cameras. So if we want to know what went into the hopper, what did the arm grab, Samsara gives that ability to, to tap into those additional cameras also. And this is just a breakdown. What is a trailer, a vehicle, the camera, the multi-camera? Just gives the breakdown per year of, of each tracker or camera. And the total for the, the year one will be three hundred thirty-one thousand and sixty dollars. So this is a little quick, quick breakdown. Any, any questions?
Any questions for Leroy?
So Leroy, each department head will have their own little module to track all the vehicles that are under them?
Yes, it's a, a online system, so everybody gets a login. And once you log in, you can see your department vehicles, you know, in the system.
And it does track speed?
It does track speed.
So you could slip one under the mayor's card and?
I don't think so.
All right, any other questions for Leroy?
This is a five-year contract, right?
It's a five-year, so it's a two-year, but it has three additional one-year renewals, so a total of five.
That's good, and it stays the same rate? There's no inflation?
No, it actually go down. The first year, we've got about four thousand dollars of freight, but the next year's that four thousand comes out, so it goes to like three twenty, three twenty-six for the subsequent years.
If there's a fault in any of the components, are they warranted or?
Absolutely. So they replace them at no charge.
All right. Anybody else?
Move to approve M-four.
Second.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by Nichols. Any further discussion? Call us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M-five.
So M-five, this is, uh, we'd like to request that the City Council consider authorizing the city manager to award River North LLC Via as the primary vendor for passenger trips provided by Tyler Transit. And just a little bit of history here, Indiam J was the previous vendor. They were purchased by ACOG January of twenty-five. They were doing about twenty-five thousand trips to assist us, about nine, nine thousand service hours. And Tyler Transit, we decided to go ahead, let's put a bid out, and let's see what, you know, what feedback we would get. Via was the only response. They submitted two responses in the bid package. Option one is called a non-dedicated fleet model, and this model uses, utilizes driver-owned vehicles, the BYOV, and is similar to Uber, Lyft, but the difference is they're complying with drug and alcohol, and they're FTA complying. So this model, the pricing was forty-nine eighty per hour, or twenty-six sixty-six per trip with a five fifty camera outfit cost, which we wanted the camera just when we have incidents, having that camera footage, it, it's worth the money. Option two was to utilize a dedicated fleet, which in this model, those, those vehicles would be wheelchair accessible, which in Model One, the, option one, they are not. And this cost is eighty-five oh-nine per hour with the five fifty upfront camera cost. So of cour-, we, we selected option one. That has the greatest cost-saving potential and the highest efficiencies. And it's a three-year service agreement with four one-year renewals. The agreement also has a do not exceed five hundred thousand unless we both agree to exceed it. And just a little bit of history, so local match, you can see there are twenty-one, twenty-two local match because of cares and the money we got for COVID, we really didn't have any local match. But of course, once that money ran out, the local matches slowly trickling up, which last year we hit one point one. And I go over trying to get back under a million. So projects like-
So projects like this really help us. Also, the, the learning curve is real. We, we did micro transit to help reduce costs. You could definitely see that the ridership when we started in January, it definitely dropped. And one thing we feel really good about, July, August and September, the ridership is starting to climb back up. So we're excited about that. People are learning the system and they're riding. So we're excited to see those numbers start climbing, climbing back up. Peritransit really stays pretty consistent, about 45,000 per month, so that line is, is flat. It, it is really consistent. And here's just a quick analysis, so Indiamj was $33 a trip for 25,000 trips a year. We were paying about 800,000 for that agreement per year. VIA, the bid is 2666 per trip. That would be an instant savings of 158,500. But that's not the model we selected, we selected the hourly. We like to look at the 4980 per hour based on 9,000 hours and we've got the potential to save 376,000. So that's the recommendation from staff.
So the 4980, that's just per hour, there's not a, a cost per trip?
That is correct.
So does that mean the ACOG that bought out the ND, MJ vehicles will no longer be using those?
So good question. We have them still as a backup because again, option one does not do wheelchair accessible vehicles. So if we ever get in a tight where we've got a lot of wheelchair trips for Lighthouse for the blind or one of our partners, we still can utilize ACOG for those trips.
Thank you for answering.
Yeah, that was my question.
So then the biggest difference between the previous vendor and the one we're approving today is these are going to the cell phone vehicles like Lyft and Uber, is that correct?
Yes, that's the biggest difference. We're going, they call them ride share, but we're using passenger vehicles to provide those trips.
So are people getting used to the micro transit?
I think that's what that, I'm, I'm real happy with that ridership number because seeing the ridership start to go back up, that tells me that people are, are riding. We'd like to see that number continue to climb, you know, we'd like to get back to those October, November, December numbers so that, you know, we're, we're back where we were before we, we implemented.
Is the efficiency improving for the wait times? Because I did a trip and that was back in late summer and the wait times were pretty significant at that time.
Good question. So our average wait time right now is about 20 minutes, at 15, 20 minutes, and that's wait and then you've still got 15, 20 minutes for the ride. So, you know, we're, we're hitting about 40 minutes on average and, and riders that, seeing that trickle, trickle up, the riders that really learn the system, if they are within their zone, really, I mean, under an hour, they're getting where they need to get, is the ones that kind of go from north to south, if they're crossing zones, it's not one trip, it's two trips. So that's where sometimes your, your wait times and ride times can be almost double because it's two trips.
Have all the hiccups with the app kind of settled down?
Absolutely, so that, the app, it, it works pretty good. We, we've got about 40% of those 12,000 rides that use the app, 60% are still calling, but the app works great and that's what you want to use because you can see the vehicle, you can track the vehicle, you know how long it's taking, I mean, you can see it all real time. So we definitely recommend the app, want to keep pushing the app and it, it's working fine. We had that Amazon day where the internet kind of tanked, you know, days like that, the app doesn't work, but we've got procedures in place where we still, you know, go out and get the, the passengers, the buses kind of just go back and start circling through and picking up the passengers.
So is there a way to track? Say I get on the app and I request a ride. Is there a way to track my request and how long it takes for a vehicle to get there?
Oh, absolutely. So staff, that's why they love on-demand and VIA. We can track when you booked it, when the vehicle arrived, how long you were on the vehicle, what stopped, where you went, so the data from an on-demand system, we have all of the data and that's what makes it, we know that, and they can look and see and that's something we've got to watch, but okay, we're in the red, trips are taking over 40 minutes, so we can easily put another vehicle to help push those times back down. But the data we get from the VIA system is, is amazing.
Yeah, and I like too, on the app, you can actually see, the rider can see where their ride is.
Absolutely.
So it's pretty cool.
All right, any other questions for Leroy?
Move to approve, second.
Got a motion by Nichols, second by Wynn, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks Leroy. V1, is that you Cassandra?
Yes. Good morning, Cassandra Braeger, city clerk.
Good morning.
This morning, requesting that the city council consider the appointment of a city representative to serve on the Smith County 911 Emergency Communication District Board of Managers for a two-year term ending on December 31st, 2027. The Smith County 911 Communications District is governed by Board of Managers as per the Texas Health and Safety Code, Chapter 772, and members of the Board of Managers are appointed to serve staggered terms of two years with half of the board members' terms expiring each year. The term of office for Mr. Ron Schaefer, one of the two members appointed by the 11 participating municipalities, will expire on December 31st, 2025. And it's necessary to either reappoint him or appoint a new member. So at this time, I'm requesting that the city council consider the appointment of a city representative to serve on the Smith County 911 Emergency Communication District Board of Managers for a two-year term, expiring December 31st, 2027. And Mr. Ron Schaefer has indicated that he would be interested in continuing to serve on the board if he's reappointed.
All right, any questions for Cassandra?
Move to approve V1.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis?
I'm sorry.
Ron Schaefer?
Ron Schaefer.
Do you need a second?
Yes.
All right, we got a motion by Curtis, second by Hawkins, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're down to the consent agenda, do we want to approve as written or pull anything?
Move to approve, the consent agenda is written.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Nichols, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City managers report.
Mayor and council, a few different items of note. On the night of Thursday, October 30th, we had a traffic accident at the intersection of Old Bullard Road and Rice Road that caused a power outage that disabled the main electrical supply to the traffic signals. Back in the old days, the old days being last year, we would have then had to have called a staff person to go out there to bring a generator to power the, the traffic signal in order for the traffic signal to be operational again. But because of improvements that we've been able to make through our intelligent transportation system plan that's been funded through the Hassan's Tellstax Fund, we had the newly installed battery backup systems in the traffic cabinet, which were activated immediately and allowed the signals to continue operating without interruption. So that was able to keep the police officer from having to call to direct traffic from us having to go get a backup battery to go put their location, a generator there. And so we were very proud to kind of seeing that in action, you know, making sure that that worked. It got cold, it's getting hot again, but we think it will get cold again. And the Tyler Public Library and Tyler Animal Control are teaming up for this month and the beginning of December to collect as many blankets as possible, make sure that our furry friends at the shelter stay warm in the weather that as it gets colder. And so if you have blankets that you'd like to be able to donate, we are able to, we're taking those at the Tyler Public Library to be able to use at our animal shelter and with those people that need, might need blankets for their dogs or cats. And then finally, we are excited to announce the installation of a permanent programmable lighting that's begun at the Tyler Municipal Rose Garden. We have the big reveal planned for Thursday, December 4th, after the Rotary Christmas Parade and with the tree lighting ceremony. And so the garden will also be open from 5 o'clock to 8 o'clock PM throughout December for festive family evening strolls and plenty of photo opportunities.
All right. Any comments or anything for Ed before we move on? Okay, before, we're going to go into executive session, but one thing I'd like to make a comment for this, which is out of the blue. You know, it, it's really nice to look out there and see people that we don't normally see at a council meeting. I don't know why you're here and it doesn't matter, but like the young men back there, I don't know why you're here, but I'm glad you're here. So I guess you came here to see good government at work, whatever the reason, you're welcome to come anytime, so.
I want to take a moment before we adjourn here for executive session to thank the city of Tyler Fire Department for that great celebration for our veterans yesterday. Great job by all and the food was outstanding, I know everyone enjoyed it, so thank you, Tyler Fire.
All right, forgive me while I read all this for executive session, here we go.
Bless you!
Wow, crescendo. All right, the city council may go into executive session regarding any item posted on the agenda is authorized by Title 5, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Notice is hereby given that the city council may go into executive session in accordance with the following provision of the government code. Under Texas Government Code, Section 5501.087, Economic Development Deliberation regarding the following. Item number one, request that the city council consider North Tax Abatement Request, City of Tyler Reinvestment Zone and Chapter 380 Agreement. Item number two, request that the city council consider the West Side Place Public Improvement District Development Agreement with Bellwood, 323, 2019 LP. Any final action by the city council will be taken in open session. We may be a while, so anyway, we're glad you're here, you can stick around or you can leave.
We look forward to seeing everyone back.
We look forward to seeing everyone back.
There's one government lever right there.
Where'd they go?
They took too long.
Looks like we're on air.
That, 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 no, it's there.
Oh, we're done.
Yeah, that's true.
Mayor, I want you to go back and tell them. I want you to go back and talk to Alex. With that same energy.
Same comments. Thank you, Mayor Proten.
You're welcome.
All right.
As the behest of council...
Are we, are we on air?
Oh, we are.
All right. We are back from executive session and, excuse me, we do not have any action items so I will just need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Did you hook that back up, sir?